Good afternoon, welcome to the 1:00 PM hearing for the Committee on Water and Land for Monday, February 7, 2022. We welcome our committee members here present. Senator Revere, Senator Missalucha, and Vice Chair Senator Keith Agarun will be here shortly. Welcome in Zoom land, Senator Favella. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website and on the link posted on the hearing notice. In the unlikely event we have to probably end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, February 9, in this room and on Zoom, and this room is Room 229. A public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. For the participant that testifies participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. You have two minutes to do so as well. Members, and for those out on Zoom land as well, just to let you know that SB 2833 relating to the Waikia Peninsula redevelopment was taken off the agenda so that the Committee can work on amendments, and I needed some time to work on this with our attorneys as well. And the bill will be heard on Friday, February 11. First on the agenda is SB 2049, and this is relating to the Coastal Zone Management Act. This amends the definition of development in the Coastal Zone Management Act to exclude construction or reconstruction of a single-family residence that is less than 5,000 square feet of floor area and meets other criteria. It defines the floor area for purposes of the act. State Association of Counties or HSEC sends testimony in support. Is anyone in attendance? Okay, HSEC, proceed. Identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Aloha, Senators. My name is Tamara Paulton. I'm a council member from West Maui, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Hawaii State Association of Counties in support of this legislation. You know, with sea level rise expected to be one foot by 2050, that's just 20 years away, and 3.2 minimum by 2,100, which is, you know, in about 78 years or so. The area that our people have to enjoy the shoreline is decreasing very quickly. In West Maui, we recently had a development that was 7,500 square feet in the SMA area, just under 7,500 square feet. And it's had a huge impact on the community. And so just requesting that, you know, the size limit in the SMA that would receive an SMA exemption be lowered to 5,000 square feet as opposed to 7,500 square feet. In this bill is also included how Maui County calculates square footage, and that's just for a reference. If there's other ways that the State Office of Planning calculates square footage, you know, we're open to that as well. But 7,500 square feet for a single-family home is really like a boutique hotel size. And we're just asking that it be lowered in light of the rising sea level and the less area that the people of Hawaii have to enjoy the shorelines. And this testimony also applies to SB 2101. I sent in written testimony. HSEC sent in written testimony for SB 2049, and it's basically a same bill.
Okay, thank you. You're gonna be around in case there's questions, I'll be.
I can be. I do have another meeting, but I can keep it here.
All right, here. Why don't we do this then? Members, we have the Maui council person. Any questions offer? Yes, Senator Revere.
Thank you. So to be clear, if the bill were amended to remove all the verbiage on the square footage analysis, and if it was just reduce the size from 7,500 to 5,000, you would be in support of that amendment if that was the option?
For sure, for sure. I mean, if you want to let each county decide how they determine square footage, that's fine. We just thought you might need a starting point or frame of reference on how we determine square footage.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and just to clarify for all of us, the square footage is the land size, right?
No, the building.
The building size. Okay, all right, just clarification then. Thank you. Any more questions for the Maui? Thank you very much for... Next to... Yes, Senator Favella.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is this a state bill or is it going to be a county, Hawaii county, and a Maui county bill?
It's statewide because the state determines what can be exempted in the SMA area. So it's statewide.
And it's a statute, Senator Favella, coastal zone management.
Okay, I mean, when you guys say coastal zone management, is that all by coastal of the island or this inbound? I mean, what is that, Chair?
With...
Yeah, you can answer.
Yeah, it's within the special management area on all the islands. So basically, how it is right now, if you build a house or a development under 7,500 square feet, you can get SMA exemption, and we're just asking it to be 5,000 square feet for an SMA exemption, a little bit smaller, because 7,500 square feet has a... It's pretty big, and it has, you know, just... It's not saying that you can't do it, but just giving the community a chance to weigh in through the public hearing process of the SMA through the planning commissions.
And Senator, the SMA is the special management area permits that the counties distribute. All developments has to go to the counties to get this permit, and the SMA lines are all within the ocean lines throughout the state, so.
You know, I just wanted, because he says 5,000 square feet. My property is only 5,100, so here's some floor that's in there then.
No, it's the size.
The size of the house.
Of the dwelling, not the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you cannot put a 5,000 square foot house on your 5,000 house lot. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here as well. Officer, yes, Officer Planning, Mary Alice Evans. Or anyone, Officer Plan, or Justine.
Hello, this is Justine Hipali. I serve as a coastal zone manager, program manager. Thank you, Senators, for allowing us to testify. I just wanted to put a couple of points of clarification. We did submit our testimony. Apologize for having it been late. The coastal zone management area is actually larger than just the special management area. So the SMA is a subset of the coastal zone management area, which is the entire state, but the exclusion of certain lands, such as those that are federally owned. And in order to address some of the comments relating to sea level rise and coastal erosion, the Legislature did pass in Acts 16 of 2020 requiring all those homes that are along the shoreline where currently are experiencing impacts from waves and erosion to require an SMA permit. And so it is not necessarily that a structure would not be allowed to be built that is controlled by county zoning. It is that there would not be an SMA, so an SMA process. So then Councilwoman Paulton is correct in that that is the opportunity for the public to provide their perspectives on certain types of development within the SMA. We provided written testimony, and we'll also stand on that as well, but I just wanted to add our perspective to some of the questions that were presented today. We also have our SMA coordinator on standby for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question since we got to there. Your comments on point three, and you just talked about the change in the floor area, and you're saying that are we exempting the SMA major permits? Is that what you said, or did I hear wrong?
Yes, so related in 2011 or 2012, the Legislature set the threshold of 75,000 square feet for what triggers an SMA permit. So what our comment is, is that when reducing this square footage, this is an additional administrative burden. There are large parcels where it may not be necessary, specifically Big Island in some cases. 5,000 square feet on some of those large parcels may or may not be an issue. So that is, you know, how we present point number three. And those that are along the shoreline, and then those that are also impacted by waves and coastal erosion, automatically now, as of 2020, do trigger an SMA permit.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Yes, Senator Revere.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. The counties, it seems like their, you know, their association is in support of this. And as previously testified by from Maui, the more important issue is the moving it from 7,500 square feet of dwelling to 5,000. And they would be willing to, you know, not worry about the definitions of everything. So that your testimony talks a lot about the defining of the square footage. So if that was repealed or deleted from this measure, and the measure only addressed the 7,500 to 5,000, that's really a policy question for the state, I should think. Would OPSD still be opposed to this bill?
I think I'd have to look into the history of this. I don't know that we would be opposed to that. If Dr. Lee has any comments or concerns relating to allowing that scale of discretion, go ahead and provide some other ways. Right now, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Dr. Lee, will you respond, please?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee members. Yes, my name is Tonya, statewide SMA coordinator. This kind of proposal is not new. I know several years ago, they have similar proposal. But I emphasize for shoreline parcel or parcel impact by the cost hazards, no matter how large they are or how small they are, you'll trigger SMA requirement for single-family residency. Because the cost, most of the single-family residency is more than $500,000. That's why I trigger SMA majors. They have to go to the planning commission for SMA major requirement. For this kind of proposal from SB 2049, then for long shoreline parcel, the parcel itself depends the floor area ratio, the height, and the use of single-family residency is a key element for the impact. As far as I know, in practical sense, when applied for SMA single-family residency, then when they get them, they use for other purpose instead of for single-family residency. That's why impact also. And also height, for Maui situation, where's Maui the special case? Because the height, that time, land use ordinance from County Maui didn't limit the height, only used two stories instead of how high for the structure itself. That's why I trigger this kind of practical problem. After that, they amended their height, limited requirement for single-family residency. I think County land use ordinance already set up all this kind of requirement. So best to reduce to 5,000, that's fine, but I get a burden to planning commission or to city county council for all this kind of requirement for SMA major requirement. That's all I testify. Thank you.
But under that logic, why not raise it to 10,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet? Why even have a limit based on that logic?
Okay.
Just described.
Yes, since 1975 to 2011, no limit for size at all. Or no matter how large they are, it's exempt from County SMA requirement for more than 36 years. That's why 2011, Act 153, put the size limit under the 7,500 square feet floor area for triggers. So that's the purpose of that time.
It went smaller, right? It went smaller and then was expanded again 10 years ago.
They were trigger SMA requirement if they expanded.
Okay, but it was expanded to 7,500 square feet about 10 years ago, I believe. I believe the square footage was smaller before that, was it not?
No, no, no.
It was not?
There was no requirement.
Oh, there wasn't any?
Yeah, no requirement at all.
No requirement, and in 75, that's when this SMA permit was implemented to the counties. Yeah, earlier, I was on a planning commission at that time.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, but the final comment, then. The... But what we're talking about is basically an exemption from review, right? So whether it's 5,000 or 7,500 square feet, the question is, at what point do we not take a look? Isn't that what's at question here?
No, it's not to take a look.
It's to exempt from development.
Yes.
I mean, the definition.
They're always based on assessment for exemption. Even exam, still need an assessment for determination by county planning director. That's a requirement, no matter is examined or not, always need assessment based on 5A requirement.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions hearing none? Thank you, Mason Chalk from Kauai sends testimony in support, as well as Chair Ellis Lee of County of Maui. We'll proceed then with SB 2101. Similarly, relating to coastal zone management, this bill defines, actually, it's the same bill, the same thing. Anyway, it amends the definition of development in the CCM as well. Officer Planning? Justine, similar?
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. We'll stand on our testimony, comments, and concerns. Thank you.
Okay, we do have communications from seven other people in support, including Council Chair of Maui, Tamara Pilton, Amy Stevens, and Karen Komkowicz, and Michelle Burke, and Tammy Hart, all in support. Members will proceed to SB 2129. And let's see, reason I'm moving on to that, we'll come back to 3320. 2129 is relating to feral roosters and the chickens. And this appropriates funds to DLNR of state parks with eradication of feral roosters and chickens on state lands. Kurt Cottrell, DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the Committee. Kurt Cottrell, Administrator for the Division of State Parks. We stand on our written testimony in opposition of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, and I would assume Ellen Kopp, you're similar, right? You're testifying for DLNR.
Correct, yeah. Ellen's just in case I got taken away by something else.
Okay, all right, okay. Stephanie Kendrick from the Hawaiian Humane Society sends testimony, comments, as well as Craig Yurie from Department of Budget and Finance. Linda Levine in opposition. Okay, just for your info, members, and why we've heard these three measures is the inclination that I would defer these measures unless you want to... Let's hear from you if you want to continue this. Otherwise, we can take it off the agenda.
The first three?
Yeah.
Chair, I would request that you reconsider and maybe just on the SMA bill, make it 5,000 square feet for the dwelling.
So as...
And then delete the rest of the stuff would be...
As the bill refers to, because they're changing it from 75 to 5,000.
That would be my preference if that's possible. Keep it for further discussion.
Okay, that's today too, right? Yeah, we also have another measure, you know, 2814 coming down CCM. So let's, shall we just go down? Because similarly, I just... Okay, let's proceed then with SB 3320, and this is relating to feral pig control permits. This codifies certain administrative rules of the Department of Land and Natural Resources regarding permits to destroy or control harmful feral pigs. And that's SB 3320, DLNR. Dave, are you taking this one?
Yeah, I'll take this. Hi, David Smith, Administrator, Division of Forest and Wildlife. We have comments on the measure. It was gonna, it's gonna have some unintended consequences. We could talk to you about what is trying to be accomplished here and what we can do. But if the concern is, you know, private landowners opening up some of the ability of private landowners to do nuisance control, that's fine. But the way it's written was going to take away all of our ability to regulate the taking of any kind of birds and mammals on private land, and that can be kind of problematic. So we put in some suggested language changes in here, and you can consider that.
Okay, thank you. Dofar, Jason, do you want to make comments on this?
Thank you, Chair. Nope, I support the comments provided.
Thank you. Mica Munikata from Ulapuna Initiative in support as well. Members, any questions on SB 3320? Okay, all right. Then we will move on to the next measure, which is SB 2799. And this is relating to the Ka'eevi Coast. This transfers lands to DLNR and establishes that land in adjacent state-owned lands as the Ka'eevi Coast State Park also appropriates funds. Kurt Cottrell, DLNR.
Hey, good afternoon. Yes, me again. This is this measure's second lap around the Legislature. The introducer put it in pre-COVID, and it kind of got stalled. We offer comments, and we're not in opposition, but we do raise just a couple concerns that as the measure moves forward, it would be good to resolve. On page three, line three, it indicates that all lands that are designated or added to a Ka'eevi Coast State Park shall become conservation. And any lands with other designations will automatically be changed to conservation. And I think the legal implications, that needs to be just vetted a little better. Our understanding that the land use commission has a pretty formal process to designate lands urban, rural, you know, conservation. So I would just suggest that while that might be the intent, I don't know if you can do it via legislation. And then the second comment is really just clarity on those TMKs. I know a couple of years ago, we were trying to do an analysis of where the land actually was. But we do have the Ka'eevi Coast Working Group that the SCR set up last year. And that group hasn't fully had a chance to meet and vet. But the hope would be that as that group meets and discusses options for, you know, East Oahu related to the scenic byway and additional lands, that we can get just a clear kind of visual of what these TMKs are. And probably before the end of session, we could probably figure some of this out. So passage of the measure, just making sure we work on those issues moving forward, I think is the most important aspect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Elizabeth Riley of Liverpool, Hawaii Kaihui. Aloha.
Aloha and mahalo, opportunity. I'm coming in late because Liverpool, Hawaii Kaihui has learned about this just on Friday. We are a community organization, 501(c)(3), and we're the ones that purchased the 187 acres on the Malca site. We're also the group that has brought forth the good work for 45 years from the Save Sand Beach movement. So we're that generation that now is the vigilant caretaker working with state and county and community to make sure that coast stays in its wild and natural state. I'd like to offer up support with reservations for this. The TMK conversation that Kurt Cottrell mentioned is exactly one of the pieces that we're hoping to flesh through. The working group that Kurt Cottrell had mentioned had not yet convened, and I think we would have been able to work through this had we convened. So I'm hoping that that's going to happen. And then there were a couple of other items that I'm hoping through the Neighborhood Board process, which is just coming up in a couple of weeks. We're going to get to address just as well. The last thing I want to offer up is that the bill does speak to problematic area and talks about Vavamalu. But please understand that for the past two, three years, community, state, and county came together and resolved one of the main issues that's mentioned there. Now, it needs additional care, but I want to make sure that it's highlighted because it was a beautiful example of how county, state, and DLNR came together. Everybody put something on the table, and just a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated it. Thank you, Kurt. And so mahalo for the opportunity. I look forward to working with Senator Lee and then seeing some more conversation with the Hawaii Neighborhood Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. When is the group going to work on this, on this bill? Since you did say you, there are some questionable areas on the measure.
Sure, so I can't speak for the working group because that's being convened by different entity. I think perhaps Senator Lee can address that. But the Hawaii Neighborhood Board meets on the last Tuesday of the month. And, you know, that Neighborhood Board has been very instrumental on care for the Ka'eevi Coast, including doing the Manulua Makapu scenic byway. That's a state DOT document. So I'm hoping that there's opportunity there. This is all good stuff. It's just working through those little details as Kurt Cottrell was indicating. Thank you.
Okay, offhand, do you know if there's a house companion that you've testified at?
Not aware of.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Any further questions, members? Otherwise, let's proceed then with SB 2814. And this is relating to the coastal zone program as well. It establishes within the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development a test force advisory group and consultant team to develop a coastal zone framework development test force to develop the programmatic framework for a Hawaii, Hawaii next-generation CCM program. And this makes an appropriation. Okay, DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair, committee members. Michael Kane, Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. On behalf of DLNR, we stand on our written testimony sharing concerns with the bill, and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Yurie from Budget and Finance sends in comments as well. And members, I did err on SB 2799 on the Ka'eevi Coast, only not announcing that there were several other communications sent in for support. And there were support communications from Ko'ula by Lua Alliance, Mr. Liggett, an individual, Surf Rider Foundation in support, Friends of Hanama Bay, testifying for Sierra Club of Hawaii, Waswain Tanaka, as well as the Environmental Caucus of Democratic Party, Ellen... Ellen Verdi, Cindy, Punihaholi Kennedy from Kona sent in support, as well as the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Raymond Tabara, Dr. Michael Cheng, Levani, and Kimiona Kane sent in communication and support. Any questions on twenty-eight fourteen, members? Okay. Mary Alice, I see you there. You, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We did submit testimony on SB twenty-eight fourteen, comments with concerns, and I just wanted to summarize those three concerns quickly. We're concerned that the Next Generation Coastal Zone Management Program would be redundant or duplicative of our existing coastal zone management program, which is primarily federally-funded. We also concerned about the capacity to manage a sixteen-member task force, and we are also concerned that it may be premature to develop curriculum and training programs, because we know that the University of Hawaii does have a process for doing that, and that the county planning agencies, you know, should be consulted on curriculum for future staff members. We also think that it's premature to prescribe a electronic permitting system implementation plan, and so we would urge, if your intent is to move this bill forward, to take our amendatory language for page ten, line seventeen to nineteen in our testimony. And, and that concludes our summary. Thank you, Chair.
You know, since I have you there, Mary Alice, okay, in the discussions on the first couple of them with regards to the two bills?
Yes.
Yes. So twenty-fourty-nine and twenty-one oh one. And I, I know your step did from the SMA eight, eight agency. So. So I gather that it seems like there's sort of conflicting for our own determination. So we're talking about two thousand, two thousand square feet increase, right, or decrease?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, yeah. And so anyway, just, just having you and your comments with this, because I know we, we heard from T D.
Senator, the, the most recent change that removes the exemption for, for single-family residences on shoreline property was a big change, and we're just starting to get that implemented with rules that were adopted in late twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. So this change.
Under seven thousand.
Seven to five hundred.
The rules, the rules that you're working on.
No, no, the rules were that the exemption for single-family residences on the shoreline is no longer there. So all residences on the shoreline automatically must be assessed and reviewed. There is no automatic exemption, and so that's a huge change, and we're starting to see the impact of that on the, our workload and the county's workload, because every single new home that is being proposed, many of them are just replacing a smaller, older home on those shoreline properties, are now coming in for SMA permits. And so we think that provides an opportunity to look at whether the size of the structure is consistent with the county planning departments and the county councils' concerns for keeping the scale of residents on the shoreline properties consistent with their vision for their, their communities. Senator there?
Yes, well, well, we have some questions. Senator Revere.
Thanks, thank you, thank you, Mary Alice. I, so the chapter two oh five A, the one we're talking, point, yeah, two oh five A, has in a provision, there's a chapter that says, "Development does not include the following: construction or reconstruction of a single-family residence that is less than seventy-five-hundred square feet and is not a part of larger development."
Has that changed? Justine, can you jump in? I think that was what the, the bill that you passed in twenty-twenty changed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm reading old, no, I was trying to go back on the.
If I got it wrong? Senator.
Senator Revere has it correct in that if it's not a shoreline parcel or not one that is affected by impacts of waves, coastal erosion, et cetera, the, the square footage does hold for the rest of the SMA, which can go fairly far depending on different areas of different islands inland.
But shoreline parcels must have the, the SMA permit process.
Regardless of size, correct.
So, so Senator Revere, I was partially wrong, and Justine has corrected me. The shoreline management area is not just the shoreline properties. It, sometimes the counties have it extending inland in areas. What, what's the average width of a, an SMA area? Say Maui, since that's the one where they're concerned the most.
It really varies. So, for example, Big Island is all of Way Mia. Oahu has portions of Diamond Head for historic properties. The most common reference is to the coastal highway.
Okay. So generally.
So the definition of development does not include is ignored somewhere else, or is it superseded somewhere else? That's why I'm just want to make sure.
There's an assessment that occurs for those proposed activities in the SMA, and so the county has discretion to determine whether or not their proposed activity does have impact in the SMA. And that's.
If they have impacts or exceed five hundred thousand dollars is, is one deal, but that's if it's development. I'm just concerned about that, the wording, that development does not include, because I thought that's the trigger for anything. But I may stand corrected here.
So I think all shoreline properties are now included in the term development, and then some properties that are impacted by erosion, coastal erosion are also included, so they're not exempted, but for property.
And that's current statute, right?
Yeah. That's what you changed in twenty-twenty.
Right.
And so Senator Revere, some properties further inland are still exempted from the definition of development if they're not impacted by shoreline erosion, coastal erosion.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming on, Mary Alice. Appreciate, appreciate your attendance. Let's proceed then to SB thirty-one thirty, and this is relating to transfer, transferability of mooring permits. It allows a holder of a mooring permit within a state small boat harbor to transfer the mooring permit under certain terms and conditions, and that's SB thirty-one thirty. DLNR, Dofar.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, Keith Ogden and Committee members. Ed Underwood, Administrator with the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. We, we stand in strong support of this measure, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Okay, we have four individuals who sends in communication and support, not speaking, Joanne Wilden, Bob Miller, Robert Miller, and Renee Miller. Any questions to the agency members? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on then to SB thirty-one thirty-four. And members, I did make an announcement earlier with regards to the previous agenda, and we took out the SB twenty-eight thirty-three, YK of Peninsula redevelopment. I need more time looking at the bill, and so we're going to have it on the agenda on Friday. SB thirty-one thirty-four, and this is relating to the payment of debt service on the Turtle Bay reimbursable GO bonds. DLNR.
Yeah, good afternoon again. David Smith, Administrator, Division of Forest and Wildlife. Yeah, this is a procedural bill, but it's, you know, pretty important. Right now, we waste a lot of time going through a, a process to do something whose outcome is already prescribed, and so what we want to do is just be able to pay the debt service on the Turtle Bay without having to go through the whole process. Right now, you know, somebody has to come in from the outside, apply to the commission, they have to consider it, and then award the money, and that's just a big, giant waste of time, quite frankly. We're required by law to pay the debt service out of that fund, and we might as well just do it administratively, so.
So it's just a procedural thing?
Yeah, it's just a procedural thing. It doesn't change anything. We pay the debt service now, we'll pay it after. It's just right now, we have this whole process. It's a big waste of time that we just want to remove.
Okay, and we need to, we do, we need to make these changes. Members, any questions of the agency on SB thirty-one thirty-four? Okay, then let's proceed to SB twenty-eight sixty, and this is relating to water conservation. This creates a refundable water catchment tax credit for homeowners who install a water catchment system needing certain requirements on residential property in the state-owned, in the state owned by the homeowners. DLNR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. Clem Manuel, Deputy with the Water Commission. We stand on our written testimony in support and offer comments, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Mahalo.
Okay, can you, since I have you, can you send your comments in? Can you, can you see what your comments are?
Yeah, so the, the department in reviewing of the bill, we just, we definitely support water conservation and all the efforts that are happening throughout the state. I think our main comment is that the tax credit, I think, that was anticipated and the value doesn't necessarily incentivize investment in rain catchment or conservation measures, because just for example, we, we provide there a small thousand-gallon plastic water tank alone can cost up to two to three thousand dollars. So it doesn't necessarily incentivize it even with that tax credit. Something for the, the body to consider.
Thank you very much. Tax Department, Isaac Choi, or Representative?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Senate Committee. This is Teresa Zetwick on behalf of the Department of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments, and are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Neil Fuji, isn't he with Sewer? I would assume same testimony. Kaleo?
Yes, Chair, same testimony. Thank you.
All right. Jerai Silva sends testimony, opposition. Budget and Finance sends communication, just comments, the normal comments that they do every bill. Members, any questions on SB twenty-eight sixty? Okay, seeing none. Then, members, let's go into the break room. IP, break room, please.
Sure thing, Chair. Opening breakout room now.
Did I? Oh, okay. Is he, one second. Oh, okay, okay. Members, I did skip one testifier. He didn't recognize him on SB thirty-one thirty. Gordon Wood sends communication in support on to thirty-one thirty, which is the mooring fees, the mooring permits. Okay. Breakout room, please. Thank you. Good afternoon. The Committee on Water and Land is going into decision-making on its agenda for February seventh, Monday. Members, let's proceed with SB twenty-fourty-nine relating to Coastal Zone Management Act. Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. Any discussion? We'll proceed to SB twenty-one oh one, and as well, Chair's recommendation that we defer this measure relating to the Coastal Zone Management Act. Any discussion? Okay. And SB twenty-one twenty-nine relating to the feral roosters and chickens. Chair recommends that we defer this indefinitely as well. Okay, then we will proceed with SB twenty-one twenty-nine. Sorry. Am I correct?
No, no, no.
Okay, thirty-three twenty. Okay, SB thirty-three twenty relating to feral pig control permits. Chair recommends that we pass with amendments, and that's defecting the date to July first, twenty-fifty, and adopt DLNR's proposed amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none, Vice Chair Ogden for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Havel? Aye.
Thank you. SB twenty-seven ninety-nine relating to the Ka'eevi Coast. Chair's recommendation is to, I'd like to defer this measure to Friday's agenda, February eleventh at one fifteen P M in this conference room, two-two-nine, and I'd like to review the language as well as the comments made by DLNR and confer with the introducer of the measure as well. Okay, so we'll defer to Friday in Conference Room two-two-nine and the video conferencing as well. Any discussions? We'll proceed then with SB twenty-eight fourteen. Chair would like to pass this measure with amendments, and we'd like to, of course, defect the date to July first, twenty-fifty, and we'll blank out the appropriation on page thirteen, line nine, and I'd like to adopt the OPSD's amendments as Mary Alice did mention on, on page ten, lines seventeen to nineteen. Any discussions on SB twenty-eight fourteen? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
With five members present, any reservations? Reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. SB thirty-one thirty relating to transferability of mooring permits. Chair recommends that we move this measure along with amendments, defect the date to July first, twenty-fifty, and adopt the technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussions on thirty-one thirty? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
With five members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SB thirty-one thirty-four relating to the payment of the debt service on Turtle Bay reimbursable GO bonds. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, defecting the date to July first, twenty-fifty, and adopt the technical and non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
With five members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation. Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Okay. Last bill, SB 2860 relating to water conservation. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, defecting the date to July 1st, 2050, and also adopt don't taxes amendments that amends a definition of qualified taxpayer. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Five members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Okay, that's it for today's agenda. Thank you, folks. Thank you, members, and thank you up there in Zoomland. And this concludes the Water and Land Committee hearing.